Board of Education meeting.
Board of Education.
Matt.
Here.
Colajay.
Here.
Good.
Here.
Ty-Hawk.
Here.
Stuckey.
Here.
You interrupted me to say here.
Sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, 1.2 is the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Sumo, second.
Roll call.
Matt.
Yes.
Colajay.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Ty-Hawk.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Okay, next we have the approval of the July 23 meeting minutes. Can I get a motion?
Sumo, second.
Roll call.
Matt.
Yes.
Colajay.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Ty-Hawk.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, 2.1 is Springboro Education Association report. Don't believe we have anybody here. 2.2 is the Springboro Classified Employees Association report. Don't believe we have anybody here. 2.3, public participation pre-arrange, and nobody has requested to speak. 2.4 is public participation during the meeting. Okay, 3.1, work session, public participation, if there is any. And next we have 3.2 through 3.4 with Mr. Ture.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the board. I'm here today to share information about a couple of items. The first is a proposed memorandum of understanding with our classified union around field trips. The current language allows drivers to pick up field trips if their route is a five-minute buffer, if it's by four or five. As we've made route adjustments and looked into this, we are proposing, and the unions are in agreement, a change to 4:15, and it just gives us a little bit bigger buffer time to allow drivers to pick up field trips so that we can make sure all of our non-curricular routes can be picked up. Field trips. 3.3, here's an update to the exempt handbook. Typically, we try during negotiation in match language and exempt administrative handbook with our two union contracts. This one slipped by. It's an incentive, and we allow our classified people to do it, and it really comes with the family that you can still get that incentive. Thank you.
Do we have a special guest?
Do you have this?
Austin.
Oh, the next is Austin. So sorry, so sorry.
I'm happy to talk about that.
Are there any questions for Matt before he leaves? A heading for all. Nope. Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Austin.
You would've just wrote up in home anyway, right?
Hey, I'm here, I'm talking about dance.
I'm kind of excited to hear you're talking about dance, Austin.
President, members of the board, welcome back to the new school year. Here to talk about adding a Springboro High School dance team. So this came to us over the summer with interest in the possibility of adding a dance team. Met with a couple of people that were involved in that push, and then we did some research on, you know, what does that look like as far as participation? Some surveys that were put out there. Just from word of mouth, found out that there's at least 30 or more students at the high school that would be interested in joining dance team right now. The plan would be to, if approved, to, we would ask to hire a head coach and an assistant coach, and then do a little bit bigger of a campaign in the high school to see if there's more interested students. This will be funded very similar to our competition cheer team, so they pay, pay to participate, and we pay for their coaches' salaries and any needed transportation. Any of the fundraising things that they would need would be through fundraising and their sponsorships and things like that, so should not be a cost to the district. The plan, kind of what we would look at first is, is really getting it off the ground in the first year where our dance team would participate in a lot of our events, half times in the athletics department, and then build that into a more of a competition schedule, but we don't want to do too much too early as far as that goes. So they would compete, again, very much like the, in competitions, like our competition cheer team. So upon approval, if approved, we would start the process of putting out there to officially, go through a process of finding a head coach first, and then look for interest and kind of go from there. We would love to be able to have this, this year and build towards the end of the fall or the winter with having a dance team that would perform at a lot of our events.
Is there a specific season for them, for the dance team? Is it an all-year thing, or could somebody do competition cheer and dance, or how does that work?
Yeah, that's probably one meeting that we would put together is to see how we would make that work. There isn't a defined necessarily season. So it's going to be a little bit different than a lot of our sports that are defined by OHSA rules that have standard timelines. And actually, competition cheer is in that same boat where we kind of have molded the schedule around their needs. So dance team would kind of be fall and winter, or maybe a little end of the spring, but mostly fall/winter once we kind of get it rolling. We begin a little bit of a late start this year, so it might be more into fall, but we don't have a, like, a strict competition schedule right now, so we wouldn't really need to worry about that yet.
Do you have time? I know you're loving this.
Yeah, we've had that discussion a little bit. You know, obviously, we would, there's certain sports that have to practice in the gym. You know, basketball, they need a basket, and volleyball. With our, with our competition cheer, we've been able to give some gym time and then practice in some other areas. There's some places in town that have studios that, you know, we can look into, so we've, we've kind of worked through that a little bit so far.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, 3.5, we have policy 5136 about personal communication devices. This is Esther.
Yes, so this is just a discussion to be proactive because this is definitely a board policy, so I wanted to get your feedback. But ORC, coming out of House Bill 96, ORC 3313.753 states that no later than January 1st of 2026, so coming up, each school district board of education shall adopt a policy governing use of cellular telephones by students during school hours. The policy shall prohibit all cellular telephone use by students during the instructional day except as described in Division C2, which C2 is if determined appropriate by the Board of Education. There's a list of, like, if a student has an AP or has a diabetic knee, or if we determine other times outside of the instructional time is appropriate. And so I brought Mr. Martin here today because this really affects 912. K8, we put that in place last year, that there are no cell phones. They're in book bags, or in companies, or in lockers, turned off most of the time. And so it's really our 912 students that this would affect. And K8, we didn't have any problems with that policy last year. 912, it was instituted pretty similar, and not a lot of problems, but the new language in the policy that we'll bring to you during our fall update is very, very similar to what we have with last year with some tweaks. And so I think it's important to talk about the word "ban" completely, because when you think about our students here, it's, we can't just put the blanket statement that, you know, cell phones are creating a mental health crisis in teens. There's lots of things that are, that are contributing to that crisis. And when I think about our students at the high school, 99% of our students are incredibly high-achieving students that are really, really engaged in their instructional time during, during their classes. And so we need to look at our policy where we're allowed to make the exceptions based around what our student body is like, not just a blanket Ohio student body. I think that our students at the high school are very, very mature, not every single one, but the vast majority of them are, and they would probably like some consideration into what their, their viewpoints are. And I know that Kyle has talked to his staff at length about this ban, and he's going to explain what they will institute this year at the high school.
So what we're, we have planned to do this year is very similar to what we did last year with our pouches. So last year, we implemented the calculator pouches where kids would walk into the classroom, they immediately put it in the pouch, they'd go sit down, class would go on, they'd grab them the way out, and they'd go to their next class. That was something that we mandated, we started, I thought our staff did a really good job of that. We had some that would have kids put it on the table versus using the pouches because they felt like kids could grab them and get out after, when the bell rang quicker, so we had some teachers doing some other strategic things with that. This year, that's not going to be an option. The calculator holder is exactly what everybody's going to be using. No questions to ask, I guess, I would say is kind of how I communicate with our, there's no leniency there.
Like the pouch you're talking?
Yeah, the pouch. So there will be no, there will be no other way to do that. Most of our teachers did a really good job with that. We had some that were a little bit more lax with that, but for the most part, I thought it worked really, really, really well, because our focus here is the instructional period, which is that class time. So what we talked about, Karen and I have talked about too, is the whole piece behind the ban. Like, what does "ban" mean? And there, you know, when you say "ban" during, during the instructional day, is that every minute from 7:30 till 2:25? Is the, is during instructional day, seven periods a day that kids have instruction? What does that look like? We've had issues sometimes with cell phones. Our approach to that has always been administrative to our attentions. That is not something that we allow our teachers to handle if there's a cellphone situation, not having it when they're supposed to have it. We always handle that administratively, so there is, I would say, a pretty severe consequence for that. So this year, what we're looking at is doing the exact same thing with a lot more stress on our teachers with the plan of using the calculator holders 100% across the board, 100% of the time during instructional periods. So that means kids would have access to them when they would leave the class, if they're walking from one class to next class, which is a matter of about four to five minutes, then they would immediately put it right back into a pouch, and they'd go sit down and do their class. So things to consider with that. You know, they would have access during class, class change, they also would have access during the lunchtime. Now, for years, and up until this point, lunchtime has always been communicated to us that lunchtime's not an instructional part of the day. Lunchtime is lunchtime. So that's a student's time to eat lunch. We've never considered that an instructional period of any sort. So, and then the other piece would be study hall. We didn't have issues really with cell phones during study hall time. We had issues a lot of times, it was within the classroom setting. Things to think about with that is, you know, the plans for that. We've talked to a lot of other schools who are doing around here very similar to what we did here at the high school. We talked to a couple of schools that said they really tried to tackle the hallway class change as a no-cellphone ban during that time. It just became too cumbersome to handle. The piece, when you look at something like this, and I look at, is how can we effectively enforce this to be fair with our kids and also be fair for our teachers? Because you don't want to put staff in a tough spot. And we have kids who have the ability to have them for, you know, 504 or IP situations, medical situations. I mean, even talks, there's even some language about how I think teachers do have the ability, if they want, to say, hey, we're doing a special thing tomorrow, we're going to be using some QR code, survey thing, like, teachers have the ability to implement that if they want. Then we have staff running kids down the hallway, asking for their cellphone, and Mr. Stuckey said, didn't bring him later that class that day. So he just puts people in a tough spot to say, are you really supposed to have it or you're not? And I don't want to put staff in that position either. So there's a lot of situations where the kids will have access to their phones, and I think we'll have more kids under what Mrs. Hester was talking about, more kids will have access to their phones throughout the day than what we even think, that just meet those, those criteria. So how can we successfully implement a policy that is fair for everybody? So that's kind of what we've been talking about. One of the things, just to be open, that we've talked about with staff, is as we go into this year, we've planned to do the same thing we did last year, but one of the things that is a talking point is study hall. Is study hall a little bit different than lunch? So our plan, and with your guys' feedback, is to continue what we did this year. Our message with our kids on Friday is going to be very clear that, you know, there's a push for a complete ban, and we're going to give them the option to have those throughout the day in between class change and lunchroom, but there will be zero access to cell phones in the classroom. And if there is, it will be an automatic two-hour administrative attention. There will be no, the warning and the, that we have, that will be on Friday when we meet with our students. There will be no two warnings, three verbal warnings, and then we'll deal with it. I mean, if we're going to give you the ability to have them in the hallways and at lunchtime, we feel like that's a privilege that we're giving them, we need them to follow this to a T. And so that's how we plan on handling moving forward. The other piece to think about is, is with all of the devices that our students have, Chromebooks and MacBooks, they have the ability to do 95% of what they would do, be doing on a cellphone during class on their laptop. They can text, they can get on iMessage, they can do all that type of stuff. So that's the other piece with the cellular device, PCD, that I struggle with, is we're chasing cell phones all over the building, and then they're sitting right there in class and have the ability to send a message to their friend right next to them. So I think that's something that we also need to be considerate of with our students. Just jump out of the principal role and then I put myself in a parent role, obviously I have one more kid, he'll be a senior next year, and I think that's something that we also need to consider when we're looking at this policy and how we handle it, is what is our community, what would they be appreciative of as far as parents? And I think, from a parent perspective on my own, I think having the ability, gosh rid, I need to get a hold of my, my child or they need to get a hold of me for something, them having the ability to do that in a way that is professional, that we can give them the ability to do that, being communicated. We've had situations in the past where kids have their cellphone, we've been known that they're going through a tough situation where a parent might be reaching out to them, and we communicate and work with teachers on that, so we have all that set up, and we would do the same with that. So I think we also need to consider that. The last thing I would say is, and I've talked to our staff about it, we as adults have access to our cell phones all day, every day. I know kids are kids, but a lot of our kids in our building are 18 years old. We have brand-new teachers that will have access to their phones, you know, if they need to for emergency purposes, and I think we need to be conscientious of that from a student perspective as well, especially when thinking about our parents and what they might have some needs on.
And I think it's our obligation to teach our students how to be responsible, and that comes from us as adults showing them how to be respectful. I know that when I'm in the high school, especially the first few days of, of school, kids are using their phone to look at their schedule. They don't carry around a paper schedule anymore.
They don't.
They use their calendar, like I use my calendar on my phone, and their email, and their reminders, and, so they're not, I think that they're 90% bad, but they're not 100% bad.
Restrooms is another place where it's, it's completely off limits. Restrooms and locker rooms is another area that, that mean that you're not even going to have the cellphone out. Like, if we won't walk into a bathroom, I mean, literally, if we walk into a bathroom and see somebody even holding a cellphone in their hand, it would be complicated, and the discipline would be involved, whether you're using it or not using it. Whether you're checking the time, not checking the time. You can't be in a restroom facility and have a cellphone out, out of your locker. And this will all be communicated with our kids on Wednesday, but that's our approach to the new policy that's going out, and it does meet the guidance of what Neola has as well. I don't know, Mrs. Hester, if you want to talk about, one of the things they have in there is that the teacher authorizes student use of a personal cellular device.
The choice, yeah.
And we're, we, we've talked, you know, on the same page, we take, we, we're taking that, the only way that we'll do that will be administrative approval. Teachers won't have the ability to do that, to cut down on the, on the use of it in the classroom.
Can you state that again? What is it they won't have the ability?
So like, that way, we don't have teachers that are just having the ability to give kids the ability to use their cell phones all the time in the classroom?
Because they're going to run it through you.
They have to run it through administrative.
Just like we do with videos?
Yes, to help kind of control that, because once that starts happening, then the use of the pouch starts dwindling as you move through the year. So it's, it's not that we don't trust our teachers, it's just it helps control that way. Thoughts?
No, I mean, I agree, I mean, I think it would put staff against staff if you didn't have a uniform throughout, right? Like, so-and-so spots, I get to do this, so-and-so spots, I get to do this.
Right.
I think, I think the uniform would help staff in, you know, maintaining, in control of, so phones go in the designated spot, and that's it.
I just appreciate you thought through what really is reasonable here, and how are we going to, like, my question was, how are you going to know in the bathroom? But if you walk in at all and you see your phone, hand over your phone, you've got a two-hour.
Yep.
So I think that it might take a little bit to get to the norm, that that's the norm, that we're, we're for real serious with this.
Right.
But I think it's a great approach of, hey, there's a potential ban out there that would mean they don't even come in the building, or whatever.
Correct.
So like, the reality is, you can work with me, or this is going to be the other.
And that's what we're, that's what I will be communicating on Friday.
Yeah.
Is like, we're, so they understand, like, we're, we're being reasonable, but if it's abused, or if you do have a situation where you do have it and we're not supposed to, and then you want to argue about giving your cellphone up in the two-hour, I mean, if those things are occurring, we will move to a complete ban real quick.
Right. But I do think with parents, to your point of how will it be received from the community? We don't want to do things just because we might get pushback, but I think you're correct with where we're at with safeties in the buildings, and, you know, it's a very different place from 10 years ago even. And so I think giving parents that security of they could have access, if a crisis were to happen, they could have access to their phone pretty quickly.
That's actually a component of the law, is that they said you have to do a cellphone ban, and then you have to, in your emergency management plan, define how students are going to have access to phones in case of emergency.
In case of emergency.
Like, we're in a lockdown, but we have to worry about kids.
What they've said is, no phones, but when parents need an emergency, good luck and figure it out.
Which I don't know, I don't know how we would do that in that, like, if we're in a real emergency, we're in a lockdown situation, they can't go to the locker to go.
Right.
So I don't, I don't know how you would create a policy like that.
Yeah.
I agree with what you just said, but teachers have to go through you now to show videos?
No, they, no.
I would never suggest.
No, they, they have to get instruction.
It's, yeah, it's an approval process through, yeah, yeah. Actually, it goes to, it goes through.
Me.
I would just echo what everybody else said, I think it's an entirely reasonable approach. I think I'm in favor of teaching them to use it responsibly versus going in the outright ban. I think that logistically presents a lot more challenges than, yeah, I think this is a reasonable solution, or that it's received by the students as a reasonable solution under, you know, we do have to follow the law, and so I think this is a very practical application of that, so, yeah, I applaud the thoughtfulness that went into it, and I'm supportive of the approach.
Totally agree.
Okay, thank you. Good, so we will have that updated policy probably in October with the other ones that are coming our way.
But it's presented, like, we're starting it now, even though the policy is updated?
That's correct. And that's, doing what we did last year, I mean, we were, with what we did last year, we went above and beyond. So what we're doing this year is, I mean, we're just really fine-tuning it and putting a few more mandates in place, but it's not going to be a huge shock to our kids. They know, because they did it last year, 85% of what we're doing, they've already done.
So you, one question I did have, you didn't have any issues with stealing, like, when they were leaving class, grabbing somebody else's phone?
We did it one time, and it was twins. One of them grabbed the wrong phone.
Oh.
In the same classroom.
Okay.
And it happened in the first week of school last year. So that was the only time we had an issue was with, was, was that. We never had a single issue of a, of a student. You know, where their, where those calculator, where the cellphone holders and pouches are hung, they're held usually right in the classroom, next to the door, or by the teacher's desk. So like, even like our LGI has it, when we have classes in there, we have two of them in there that holds, holds 72 phones. So we usually, we, I mean, we have it in every space that is a classroom space.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for coming and sharing that with us.
You're welcome.
Thanks, guys.
Next, we have 3.6 and 3.7 with Mrs. Stacy.
Tonight before you, we have two consulting agreements. As you know, our former COO stepped over at the performance beginning of July, that he was looking for a new opportunity. We did post the position, we anticipated the position the next day, and we did go through a process, and we interviewed all of the candidates, and it ultimately resulted in non-qualified candidates. This position's tough, because it does really require a specific and unique skill set, and we have, you know, just in learning some of the information, when you see a big picture, we have about a million acres, or sorry, millions, we're at over 300 acres, over 10 school facilities.
Eighty-nine acres.
It seems like, I would love to be in there, but it's just a lot to cover, and so this position is vital and all of that, and a lot of, you know, day-to-day oversight that is needed for our facilities and our operations. And so tonight, looking, you know, we're working towards a longer-term solution, but tonight we do have two consulting agreements. The first one is item 3.6 for Dr. Vale. He will provide daily oversight to our daily operations now through mid-October. He's retired superintendent, and he's dabbled in many of the areas of operations, and he'll be providing that daily guidance to our operational staff. And then the second item would be item 3.7, which is a consulting agreement for Todd Petrie to go from mid-October through December 31st. We do have some big items coming up in the near future, such as our district safety and security plans that we need to look at, potential building project, we have some key operational staff that are going to be retiring, and so his experience coming from Baytown, two years of CBOO experience, I think will be vital for helping us with some of those challenging upcoming needs that we have. And so those are items 3.6 and 3.7.
Okay, so with that, you know, a bunch of us were on your traveling roadshow on Monday, so we introduced at that time Dr. Vale, so what is the thought process? Will this, how, how will we be letting, because obviously that's a position that involves other people, that, you know, they would need to know who it is.
We will discuss it at our next DLT meeting in two weeks, principals, and then at their staff meeting, they can make that announcement as it's closer to October.
So are we going to share out, like, a full plan at that time of what we're, what we're thinking moving forward, like, through December, what we're looking future?
Yeah, we're still working through some of the details on the longer-term plan piece, but I do think that we're planning on communicating with DLT, and then obviously the direct reports, what we're at least doing between now through December, and then probably as we get closer to October, November, hopefully we'll have a longer term thing ready to you for January and after.
Any other questions?
Just.
Go ahead.
Real quick, it looks like the two separate contracts overlap about 10 days, is that right?
Yes, and what, the reason why they do is because there's possibly some things that might happen on weekends or evenings and things that would stretch it out, plus there's probably going to be a little bit of overlap, so that anything that's happened between now through October, Dr. Vale will be able to bring Todd Petrie up to speed, so there may be some overlap, but that is just a not-to-exceed, so obviously it'll just be happening.
I was, I was actually more concerned, is that enough time for a proper handoff? If you guys have a good balance.
Okay.
I think so.
I was just going to say, I think, I just think it would be important, like, what we're supposed to say, just communicating to staff, right, like, to keep that transparency, because something will impact potentially other areas, not that way, you know, just to keep that transparency, we sound like town, appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, now seeing any 3.8, we have any committee reports? No? And can you just refresh my memory, with the committees, do new people come join committees September or in January?
January.
It's January, so nothing is changing with this?
Yes, yeah, my first one at the end of August, and the missing people, so we'll be doing that closer towards the end of the year for the next year, right? Because I have my same people. And I'm, DPC is on a two-year cycle, but it would start in, in the school year, the school year.
That's the one that I was thinking of with parents. So there, are there some that cycle out while the other ones?
I think this year, we're having everybody come back, and we're just, we're going to kind of reset it completely, because the last couple of years, it's been on, been run consistently.
Got it. Okay, okay. And so we don't need anybody new, because you're bringing the same people back that were here last year. Gotcha, okay. Great. 3.9, any other business required? Nope? Okay, next we have 4.1 through 4.4 with Mrs. Stacy.
Item 4.1 is a consulting agreement for Dr. Vale, end of August through October. Item 4.2 is a consulting agreement for COO services for Todd Petrie for mid-October and December. Item 4.3 is approval to add baby pop to the 25/26 lunch crisis. That wasn't part of it, something new, it seems like people are very. That wasn't part of it, something new, it seems like people are very excited about that, so that's to approve that price. Item 4.4 is the appointment of a delegate and alternate delegate, so you guys will need to decide that, who that's going to be for the upcoming LSBA capital conference, and then we'll have...
Yep. Okay, so should, should we select that?
Motion in a second, you can do a motion in a second, and then during the discussion, you guys can...
Okay, can I get a motion for the approval of 4.1 through 4.4? Go ahead. Second. Dan and Sarah. Okay, friends, 4.4, who would like to attend? Well, is, who is not going to conference? So, we're all up for this.
I'll be the alternate. What are the dates this year?
It's later.
It's 16th, yeah.
Oh, it's the 16th?
Yeah, it's much later than normal. 16th through the 18th?
I probably should be able to go this year, that would be better, so I'll do it this year.
You'll do it this year?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay. Dan, did you say you would?
I'll be alternate.
Okay. So, Jamie is...
Say, I'm just going to do busy, dirt, at that line, or maybe...
Whatever it was.
Not the week of my white square.
Yes.
I should probably do it this year.
Well, you know that, what that means, right? Like, this year, really...
It'll be that one, the last night, it was like three hours.
Yeah.
I remember you.
It was a big one.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay. Next, we have 5.1 through 5.5, I believe, or is it 4?
That's what I had to.
Okay, good.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I stand before you to seek approval for our personnel report. A couple of things noted on there that are a little bit out of ordinary, as you probably know, they reduced retirement to 32-years, so we think that we're going to see a little revolver this year, maybe a 2.1 year if we keep going, but Jen Smith and Karen DeMar are on there from Dennis Elementary, two great teachers. Jen is a fantastic classroom teacher who's been at Dennis for a long, long time, does a great job, and Karen, you should probably know, just being an intervention, very solid as well, so definitely going to miss their presence at Dennis, and it's very early, she retired for the school year. Item 5.2, as I discussed earlier, is the memorandum understanding with the Springburg Classified Education Association to adjust field trip times, the route times in field trips when they can pick them up. 5.3, also I discussed in work session, it is to add language to the exempt handbook that allow exempt employees to be paid if they use same time to attend a funeral.
I'm glad that we're considering that, that feels very fair, not to punish somebody because of a funeral, so...
Is that restricted based on the relationship? I mean, at some point, I feel like we got into that.
There's language in there where if it's your immediate family, it's only one way, and if it's not your immediate family, it's like, what? And in the classified handbook, it all, they're required to... There are certain... Okay.
Possibly.
Oh, and then 5.4, approval of the dance team at Mr. Ritz, excuse me, so, oh, for the present work session, he's not getting attention for it.
Okay, that's my thought, I should have been sure.
Should I do the dance now?
If you go, yes, you have to do it, dancing with the award fundraiser.
That's a difference. Okay, 5.6.
5.6 is athletics, so we got to do five-one through.
Okay, so this is different than what's up here.
I'm on the floor, you got to divide them up.
Okay, so 5.5 is approval of 5.1 through 5.4. Can I get a motion? Second. Dave and Sarah, roll call. Yes.
Salage?
Yes.
Stidh?
Yes.
Thank you. And 5.6 is approval of the athletic report.
So, I seek approval for our athletic report. You'll see it's full of support positions for our fall season. While we're certainly excited to welcome our students back to school, this also marks the beginning of the fall school season, so scrimmages are in full swing, and we're going to get ready for some competitions very, very soon.
Awesome. Can I get a motion for approval of the athletic report?
Second.
Roll call.
Bad?
Yes.
Salage?
Yes.
Stidh?
Yes.
Playoff?
Yes, Stikey?
I abstain.
Thank you. Next, we have Mrs. Burson with the Student Services.
President, members of the board. Two contracts on the agenda tonight, both are very over from last year, and we're doing old, not new contracts, so...
Full swing.
Full swing. Last your questions?
Can I get a motion for the approval of these contracts, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call, Bad?
Yes.
Salage?
Yes.
Stidh?
Yes.
Playoff?
Yes, Stikey?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next we have announcements and future considerations. Start with Sarah.
So, I think it's super exciting, and thanks to Austin, who's been bringing the dance team, because I mean, I think it'll give kids just another opportunity. It does make sense, especially since we have competition to your, that addition to happen. And I really appreciate Karen's invitation for us to come along and see this, that was super fun, and I really enjoyed that. I mean, it's exciting, we're at the beginning of the school year, starting fresh, and I really appreciate the work that you and Kyle have worked on with the cell phone, because I know it's not easy. Lots of things to consider, as you know, some schools have children too, they have to really, so I understand, I get it, so I appreciate that. And then, just, you know, I wish everybody a happy first half-week of school. That is a happy. And I hope that everybody remembers the patient, kind, grace, right? Especially, like, leading into next week, things aren't perfect, you know, you know, sometimes we'd like for them to be, like, you know, just follow the appropriate chain of command. If there's an issue in the classroom, we talk to the teacher, or we talk to somebody else, like, knowing who to contact. If you're not sure, it's obviously a job to do. I'm sure they will, I'm sure, it's a busy time.
Hey, you get everything that I was going to say, so I won't belabor it again. I know, I appreciate it, as a fact, by the way, I'm not able to turn home, and we not approved the dance team. So, happy that my daughter will have that potentially as an avenue to participate in a school activity. Just thank you for Austin, and the work that went into that, and yeah, just echoing again on the cellphone policy, again, just thanks for the attention to that. I mean, it is a serious topic, and I, you sort of understand both sides of it, but I think, again, the way that we're approaching it is extremely reasonable, and fully supportive of the approach that was laid out. And then, yeah, just, you know, I hope everybody has a great start to the school year, I know it is active time, but I know there's been a lot of work and planning that we got to see some of earlier this week, and so I think it's going to be a great year, and just wish everybody nothing but success as we welcome our kids back.
Yeah, good points. I think, again, appreciate the nuance on the cellphone stuff. I don't envy anybody that's got a part of a teenager's cellphone, so, you know, I think it's well-thought-out, again, I think it strikes the right balance. I think it also reflects, again, kind of our community and our values and our expectations, so I think I appreciate you guys not just, you know, taking a template and running with it and creating a lot of havoc, because, again, I think it could have blown up, so, again, really appreciate how, how it was handled. Two, again, as said previously, I hope everyone has a great start to the year. I think it's worth pointing out, I mean, it feels like school's been in session a couple weeks, I mean, I've been up to this building and other buildings, like, every day, and I see a lot of people hard at work, and I already had a, my daughter had her schedule changed, and I think it's, you know, important to recognize that people are already hard at work on a lot of stuff, and I also wanted to acknowledge just, quite frankly, the great customer service that, you know, our school is providing. Again, she, Sophia, had some schedule issues, and I don't know if it was Mr. Mark or somebody else, like, helped her write out, got it figured out before class even started tomorrow, so I, I just really appreciate that. I mean, I, you know, I'm sure everybody's getting the same level of attention when they need it, and again, I just, that's tremendous, because I know for a fact, other districts don't necessarily do that, so, thank you. Yeah, other than that, good, good luck to everyone with the coming school year, and another fun one.
Should we call you a board member now?
All right.
I'll see you, Chris.
Not at all.
Appreciate the work on the cellphones, and good luck to you, Kyle, with that, okay? He left. No, anyway, athletics, just real quick, last scrimmage for football is tomorrow, press event at 5:30, RC at 8:00, I was going to ask Austin, I think the only reason RC is at 8:00 is because Ryan wants to see the lights again, flashing and stuff like that. Then lastly, how do we as board members get to use that van? Well, was it, it's not, is it an Explorer? Is it an Explorer? How, do we have to...
It's taking students to outside places every day. Would you like to drive that? Did you take your retirement?
What time does it start?
You have to be volunteered.
Volunteer? No, that's, that takes me out, I'm a volunteer for anything. That's it, thank you.
Everybody said great things around the cellphone policy. You did a great job of nailing a great balance and really thinking through every aspect of, to it, because you can have lots of rules, but if you can't figure out how to truly be consistent and have consequences, you may as well not have them, so I think you did a great job with being reasonable with that. Thank you for inviting us to the Traveling Road Show, that was super fun, it just brought back lots of memories of the early years when I was teaching and sitting there, and, like, there's an excitement, but there's like a sadness that summer's coming, but there's an excitement about the new school year. So, it was just really a neat thing to see at the different buildings. The last two things are community things, so, one of them was, there was conversations this morning at my spin class about traffic up and down 741 yesterday, that literally it took people 30 to 40 minutes to get through, to which I said, it's super exciting to think about there being a possibility of a new school at Easton, because it's going to help, and to just get conversations going around, you know, we know that it's not pretty here, and when we have lots of open houses and stuff, you know, a lot of people need to get places, but it's just neat to hear some excitement also about what could be